Planning and zoning board will come to order. Today is Thursday, September 19th, and it is 1:30. Preliminary matters. We have the agenda and/or deletions here. Tim, any corrections?
Staff has none.
Next thing on our agenda is open for public comment on any particular items. Nothing in particular right now, but if you have anything to comment, I see anybody. Seeing nobody come to the podium, we will close public comment. Would not like to have the approval of our minutes from the September 5th meeting. Has everybody read them?
Yeah, I do have a correction on page two. That's third of the way down. That would be ingress and egress.
Yeah, okay. Very good. Any other corrections? Looking for motion to approve the minutes?
So approved. So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have first and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The second is a discussion of possible amendments to the boat and dock regulations of the city of Vero Beach. And Tim, I think I'm gonna give you the lead on that.
Yeah, I'll try to go through it. I did talk to several of you before the meeting. Others, I couldn't get ahold of you, and I apologize if I didn't talk to you directly, but I had a very busy week with all sorts of appointments. And basically, this item was set up. We've had some issues that have come along in the past about boat covers at docks, dining over water at, say, the Riverside Cafe, and even at dockside, where basically our regulations don't permit it. Now, in some cases where you're over sovereign waters, the FDP doesn't allow that generally under their regulations. It doesn't mean they couldn't allow it, but our code, even if they allowed it, we wouldn't allow it, and we have gone and we've done enforcement on that. So it's certainly one area we could look at. This other issue that came up was a recent code enforcement action dealing with a gentleman that, without any permits or approval, did a tiki bar on his dock. And basically, there's waters and all these other non-water-dependent type uses being that's in that structure on the dock. Our code does not allow these kind of structures. In fact, it doesn't really allow even boat, you know, even boat covers. But I have allowed people to put temporary boat covers, where you have a canvas, the removal tops, have allowed those without enforcement, knowing that we'd probably come back and address this. So I thought at this time, our chapter 31 needs to have some changes done to it. We need to look at things. We've got cruise boats that take out in dinner cruises. We just need to have some better language in there, which we will take care of, but I didn't. There are other changes in here, and I wanted to get your sense of approval before we prepared. And I'm not asking you to approve any rate changes. All we're asking is, I need your, you know, kind of direction for the staff to take the time to start preparing things that would go through the process, so you're not necessarily approving. But if there's things that you're against, really adamantly opposed, please, I'd like to get that kind of indication. Now, one thing, we were supposed to have today, the attorney for the tiki hut property owner is not here, and we wanted him to be here to present his case, so you could understand that more. So, you know, it's gonna be tough luck if he isn't here. He was told that this would be the time that he would have this opportunity, and I certainly would give him the opportunity if he wanted to go to the city council, but I would like to get from you some direction on that kind of thing. So there's three different things I'm looking at today. The first one has to do any kind of non-water-dependent structure over a dock, particularly these kind that have non-water-dependent uses, having a tiki bar with a wet bar, refrigerator, and all these other things. I can tell you most ordinances that I do not allow these kind of things in residential neighborhoods, and I am not particularly fond of allowing that. I think you definitely, one of the problems you get is allowing these type of water, non-water-dependent uses over there brings a lot of visual clutter to the, and also a lot of activities that I don't know if you necessarily want in your backyard. If you live on a smaller canal that where you have neighbors right across from you, you could have a lot more activity on there than just people lowering and raising boats and going out and using it. So there are some negatives to that. As to the outside water for dining, I don't particularly have a problem with that where we have docks over that, as long as it's just outdoor dining. We're not putting kitchens or any kind of uses over there, but you could serve people out there. I don't see that as necessarily a major problem to do that, other than you do have some environmental issues, throwing food into the water and all the other things you shouldn't be doing, but people do that anyway. But that certainly is not an issue from the standpoint of the staff. I don't know how you feel, but we would have to change our regulations to allow that specifically. So the last thing, and I said the boat covers, I don't have a problem from a staff standpoint for the temporary canvas covers. When you get into structures, that will be in somebody's face sometimes in the backyard, and it does add a lot of clutter when you have these kind of structures. We're not talking about boathouses. We're talking about more of a permanent structure and cover for boats. And at least that's a water-dependent use, unlike having a party bar out on your dock. That's a little different kind of thing. And when we talk about dock, we're talking about actually being over the water. We're not talking, being on land on these kind of uses. So I'm opening it up for questions. Your, what your initial reactions to this?
I have a question, Tim.
Yes, sir.
Where does the back lot line end, the people with waterfront?
Usually at their property line. Some go in.
Don't we have a zoning ordinance that says you cannot make a permanent structure within 15 feet of the rear property line?
Some of them, you can, they're five feet. Some have no, depending where they're at. That's correct.
Okay, and the docks are an exception?
The docks are exception. So this would have to be exception outside. That's exactly right. Because if it was on land, it would have to meet the setbacks, and we don't have that.
It is true, though, Tim, that some property goes out into the water, period of, it may be covered.
That's true.
Okay.
That's true.
Now, you're talking about man-made canals or are they natural?
Both. I personally owned a piece of property that went.
Here?
No, well, it was up in Melbourne, and it went out significantly in the water. And over a period of time, erosion had taken away the property, and we still own the property, but it was underwater. So that occurs, and we'd be able to use that as our building line also, because we're still paying taxes accordingly on it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little confused as to whether we're talking about residential or commercial docks or both.
We're just talking about residential in this case.
But today's conversation will deal with both, is that correct?
Well, the other thing has to do with the outdoor dining. That's a very minimal, but we're just talking about these kind of uses in residential districts.
Well, yeah, that's what, one of the things that confused me was when you said, you know, they can serve out on the dock.
Well, and that would be in commercial districts.
They do that at the dockside.
Right, and that's exactly, that's what I'm saying. It's two different issues that I'm talking about here. I'm not getting into the commercial districts where they can allow non-water-dependent uses over, other than allow maybe outdoor dining and serving out on that, which is pretty minimal.
And this tiki bar case, could you describe that to us a little bit? Is that residential?
That's in a residential district, and the tiki bar is right over the water on, it's right near the shoreline. Basically, the gentleman went in there. He never got a permit. Well, he had a Seminole Indian do it. So this is a, if you understand under the Florida Building Code, a tiki hut done by a Seminole or Mississauga isn't under the purview of the building code. However, it has to be all-natural and all that. Well, what, and that doesn't mean you can't, you need our approval to put it somewhere. It doesn't mean, okay. Well, what happened here is, he had the, he went and had the tiki hut done, and then they did a lot of work after that, putting in electrical, putting in plumbing, and that clearly then is in violation of both the building code and it was already in violation of our code, not getting approval.
It's all-natural plumbing, right?
Well, it's, part of it is, yeah. And it's very nice, is what I heard. So there's a lot of money involved for this individually.
What caused the complaint? Was it the?
The complaint was, I don't know, we get, every time, we'll get a complaint from somebody dealing with like boat covers and things, and then, and like Bethel Creek area, and then my staff will do more of a comprehensive look, because we're trying to be fair to everybody. It is difficult, I think, if you read my memo, to find these. We aren't out on the police craft going through, in the, up and down the canals to check these out. So a lot of times, unless we have a complaint that comes in or we see one being done, then we'll look at it. It's kind of thing, before I came here, the city did a wide sweep on boat covers where they were doing that and had them removed. So I think it's time that we clarify all this and at least come to some solution. So in this case, there were about three or four other properties involved that were cited under this. Two of them have come into compliance. One had a temporary boat cover, and I allowed that gentleman to keep it, because it was a canvas cover and it wasn't any, it wasn't a full structure.
Could you define a boat cover for me? Now, we're talking about a person who takes their boat out of the water on a lift of some kind, or possibly sitting in the water, and they stretch a canvas over the boat.
Well, no, this would be a structured, over with a canvas roof.
Not the cans they pull over.
No, 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 no. This would be an actual structure that would hold the roof, and the roof would be, in this case, would be temporary. I think it's aluminum.
So it'd be like a tent.
Yeah, like a tent.
And how do you define temporary?
Well, what I'm saying, it's removable. I haven't written the ordinance yet, but what I'm saying is something that could be removed. It wouldn't be like a roof that you, you know, you couldn't just take the roof off. That would be more permanent.
Well, and number three, you said unenclosed, permanent or temporary. If we're gonna allow temporary canvas covers, and I guess part of that is because you could take it down if a hurricane was coming or something. But is there a difference between that appearance-wise and, let's call it a semi-permanent roof?
Well, I think, I haven't written the regulations, and that's something for us when we dig into the regulations that we could look at, because I think parts of things you want to look at are heights and a few other things for the clutter. And I'm not at that point. The point is, is writing the regulations, and then we can do it through workshop. We're gonna, you know, we'll look into this more, because I've got several regulations we've done for other communities that we could certainly look at. But in this case, normally, the temporary cover would be not as big a mass as, say, a permanent structure where you may have a gabled roof or something else on it. But the regulations could address that more clearly. I'm just saying, I did not, from a policy standpoint, have as necessary as big a problem as I do with a formal structure on it. I mean, you have some docks where people will have just a little covered area where you could have people waiting.
Right.
Okay?
How about?
Is that a, is that a, is that a problem, you know?
Tim, we have a pretty good-sized elephant here we're gonna eat, and the point I think we do is kind of set it down to the parameters. If we start by saying, our permanent structure's non-acceptable, and if we can agree on that or agree on that.
However you want to.
Then we can break it down from that, until we get down to what we do feel is acceptable, in any range in between. I think we'll clarify what we're trying to accomplish that way, and then we can go to commercial and do the same adjustments there, if that works all right for Dawn. Because if not, we'll keep going around the circle.
No, no, and I think that's a good, that's a good approach to do on this. Remember, we're not setting the regulations. This is just saying, saying staff, you know, we don't have a problem with you moving forward with doing something, but obviously, it's gonna all have to come back through you in the process.
Can I just give a little overview? This affects my community in particular. We have 176 sites. We're all on canal, and we live within our property line. When our rear yard setback ends, that's it, and the rest of it is city water. And we have permission to put our dock on the city water. So to use that dock in any other way is literally expanding the use of our property, especially if we're going to be putting any kind of structure on that dock. My community has lived with a good neighbor policy for all this time, and it works. We respect our neighbors. We enjoy, we all mutually enjoy the water. There's been encroachment on our rear yard setback line, and that's happened over time. But I really think that there would be a major, major problem if we were to start allowing uses on that dock. There's very few people who do have a, in fact, I can only think of one in recent times where there was a temporary cover on a boat, over a boat slip, and I'm not sure that that's even there. Everyone worries about what's gonna happen in the winds. You know, we get these sudden storms, and they're not necessarily hurricanes, but things fly off docks. And my community hasn't taken this up, and I think it'd be important for them to do this, but I'm just giving you a little historical perspective on that. Having the zoning as it is now, having the code as it is now, has protected the ability of everyone in my community to enjoy the water, mutually enjoy the water. So that's my opinion right now.
The other thing I want to point out with the Vero Isles group there, that the, were you to do any more improvements on that dock, which is in, it's actually city right-of-way, the city would, you'd have to go through a license agreement with the city anyway. So there's a little more control there.
Yeah, exactly.
On that, on that. But those are good points, and I think to point out, and that's why you see a lot of communities have kind of strict regulations when they do on these things, but they're very concerned about the clutter and all that.
Oh, yeah.
That it causes back there.
Very much, very much.
And if you gotta, if you have a narrower canal, you're right in your neighbor's backyard. If you've got a, parties going on all the time, you know.
And noise carries over water.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I was gonna say, bring up that point, is that it seems like when you have a structure, either temporary or permanent, there may be an aspect of proximity to your neighbor, either across the canal in your case or adjacent, but if you're out in the middle of nowhere, it might be a little bit different than if you're, you know, jammed in across the narrow canal.
Mark, I think we start getting, my opinion would be that if we start getting to exceptions, we'll start running into complications that make it so complex we can't deal with. Either we, my opinion is, we should be able to do it or not do it, and we kind of feel that it's a possibility. If you have a very wide lot, I don't think, but then we're gonna say, how wide is it gonna be, and what kind of exceptions do we accept? And I've lived in places like New England and places like that, where they do allow boat storage, and they put it up inside for the winter, and that's common there. It's a different kind of atmosphere, it's different weather conditions, et cetera. I don't know that that's appropriate for Vero Beach. So far, I don't believe it is. I don't know where we want to cut off. Could we start to say that, does anybody here on this panel want to say that we would, should allow boat carriage houses? That's what they call them. What's the term we use from up there?
Boathouses.
Boathouse.
Boathouses. Sometimes there's a carriage house above that.
Yeah, I was just asking, well, you could go that far, but I wasn't asking for you.
I think that's a no here, is that correct?
Right. I don't think that, I wasn't proposing to look at a boathouse. I was looking more at a boat.
Even the covers represent a problem. It's a visual.
Yeah, I was gonna say that I used to live in Naples and went down to Marco Island quite often, and that's a canal community, and they do allow temporary structures, and it is clutter.
Yeah.
Marco Island is probably one of the ugliest places in the state.
Been there.
Tim, you might have to, you might have to characterize the nature of the water body that we're talking about.
Well, no, that's true, and I think when we say width of the canal, some are on open water, the width of the lots.
How about lakes and ponds?
Right. Well, this is, we're really talking about, yeah, but we don't have.
Mr. Chairman, I think the controlling thing here is the property line, and we have an ordinance that says permanent structures have to be, follow within the property line. Any permanent structure other than a dock with a specific marine use will be prohibited. Not, no special things. I mean, to me, it's very important that you draw the line and you tie it to the basic concept of the people being able to only put permanent structures on their property that they own, within the setbacks that are defined. Any other permanent structure beyond a dock with a marine use is, to me, you'd want to make sure, very tight, because you can really get into some serious, first of all, there's environmental issues involved.
Exactly.
As you start covering the water, you then cut back on marine vegetation. You have a lot of other issues. So I think it's very clear that, at least from my standpoint, we should use the controlling is the basic understanding that you can build permanent structures on the property you own within the setbacks, and other than that.
So no provisions for like temporary boat?
Not, I think I'm concerned.
As a matter of full disclosure, I'm so far away from boat and dock ownership and water, for that matter, that it's, that it isn't funny. But I think, Don, when you said, talked about marine use, it seemed to me that a cover might be a marine use. They certainly have lifts, which are perhaps unattached to the dock.
We've approved that.
And those are certainly permanent. So if you've got a lift.
Well, you need a lift to get off the, you know, you've got to get off your boat, too, so there's gonna be some permanent structure there.
Well, then we go to fish cleaning tables. Is that a structure?
Well, yeah, that's, normally, that isn't allowed either over the dock, because you don't want them, and they do.
That's right.
They throw.
People clean their fish right there, they run them, who's connected on, and that's all, and if everything goes, I mean, so you have to draw the line someplace, and it has, I think, has to be a clear, distinct line, that's all. And I think that we should keep it pretty, pretty basic, that you're not allowed to do much. If you want to clean, they're gonna do that anyhow. I think you'll have a hard time getting, but it should be, I think Dawn is on the right path, where we don't want anything beyond the building line, and.
Okay, so what we're saying is not even, not even temporary, okay, that's fine.
So are we saying docks, lifts, no covers of any kind?
Lifts are an exception to me, that's where I could.
The boat lifts.
Lifts are all right.
Lifts are already right. What I'm gonna do is make sure the ordinance clarified, so it reads better, so that's all in there, but we've approved lifts.
I'm concerned about the temporary, Mr. Chairman, I'm concerned about the temporary structures because of their flimsiness, given weather. If you have a wind or something like that. That creates danger to the neighboring community and to the estuary.
And the next boat.
And the next boat, exactly.
Well, it looks like you've already settled the first issue, and how about the second issue?
Well, do we have the same issue on commercial property as well as residential? All right, some of the, like, take a look at the docks on Royal Palm Point. Some of them have boats, some of them have lifts. They, you know, may or may not, I don't know whether they have covers or not, but they conceivably could.
Well, we're not changing the, the overall boat and waterways ordinance won't change it, so they're not, they wouldn't be able to have those either there, other than we have an existing situation.
My concern with looking at a, any kind of commercial over water use right now is that we've got so many environmental problems with the lagoon that I would hate to add to it at this point. Is there a push on this, Tim? Is somebody looking to do that?
Well, I've got two restaurants that definitely would like to do it. You know, I have, we've got.
Are these over city water, or you said sovereign water?
Well, the one is over city water, dockside. So that's probably more problematic, because we get into some issues over, over as a commercial use of right-of-way, so there's money involved there. But the Riverside is the one that we definitely, if you've, I'm sure you've been to Riverside Cafe, where the outside, that walk area out there, they had a lot of seating out there, and they were serving. So we shut them down. Now, they may be back at it again, but we did shut them down, and I said, well, look, we will take a look at it in the future to see. So we were really looking at maybe limiting these, the outside dining, just to these areas, not to these areas, but to where we have actual dock areas over water that could be used.
They're existing.
Where they're existing. I'm not promoting expansion of areas out there. We could write this thing to be more limiting.
Doesn't that affect their parking requirements and their number of seats?
Well, remember, depending on how it is, I've heard there's certain exemptions if they're outdoor, and usually, if they're covered, they'll get a 200-square-foot exemption, but it does affect their parking to some degree. And that's one reason why that restaurant's looking at picking up some surplus land where that recycling, right near there, which they use for parking already and which we're negotiating with.
Tim, when you're talking about outdoor dining on a floating dock, let's say, or a permanent dock, are you talking, are they talking about like permanent fixtures, they're gonna nail in the tables? Or they're gonna take them out at night and bring them back?
No, no, no. My, the way I would write this, they would have to be things that could be removed and all that, and they could leave them out there at the night, but they would have to be removed. There couldn't have any kitchen facilities, wet bars, or anything else except to be able to serve people out there.
So it's seating with people's, at a table?
Yeah, right now, you'll see.
Being served out there?
Right. You'll see people taking drinks and everything out there already. It's not like, you know, and how do you police?
The only thing I see with taking food out on a dock like that is, they've got to clean it over time. They're gonna do a lot more cleaning than they would if there was just a seating area.
And, yeah, and then people throw food in the water. Let's say a good environmental.
There's all those lemons and lime slices.
No, it's just that there's more, there's more water, you know, going into the, I mean, just, I don't think it's a great idea at all.
Where they're talking about this, is this a but on residential?
No, I mean, like, commercial cafe, that is, it's not. We're not talking about any, we could certainly, it would about, but though, if it were dockside. Clearly, dockside's right across from a residential, so.
But they're not talking about moving out into the canal of the city?
No, just to where they have the dock area, right. I mean, we're not talking about expansion of anything out in the water. I was gonna make this very limited, just to deal with, you know, situations we currently have, and we would write it to be that way. You seem kind of lukewarm about that.
Well, I.
It's all right, I mean, I'm just.
As long as we don't end up with squid lips or something like that out here.
Are we looking at, you know, one restaurant wants it, another, another, they'll build another one on, you know?
Well, I think that's it. I think what we were saying is that we would limit it to where you have existing dock areas and as of when the ordinance is enacted, so we would not be expanding any of this. I mean, that gives them.
Will that called up legally, Peggitt?
Oh, sure. Okay, and there aren't too many of those situations. I think it would be a, it would be a problem if we allow expansion of docks out into where people would set up restaurants. I mean, it happens in other areas.
I just don't want to get into limiting somebody into a fight, you know, down the road.
Are you talking about existing docks and existing uses?
Right.
In other words, if you had an existing dock, but it either isn't currently a restaurant or they're not currently serving on that dock?
Well, we could limit it to an existing use, a restaurant use, yes. That would even limit it more. That would be fine. I mean, that would be, that would be fine.
So basically, they have the dock, they want to be able to use it for food? That's all we're looking at right now?
And of course, and of course, they would have to get FDP approval, so it's gonna be up to them to get their permit changed.
Are there, talking about this environmental junk, are there systems that would contain or, you know, kind of like a under-the-dock trough that would contain water and food that would fall through the cracks and either put them in the sanitary sewer or do something else with them as opposed to going directly into the lagoon?
Well, I think most of these dock areas are, they don't allow a lot of sunlight. You know, that's one of the things that were brought up by Mr. Carteau, is that a lot of, you're adding more on the dock, it keeps, continues to extinguish any sunshine you get down there, but we don't have requirements in our docks. I mean, we have a lot of model dock ordinances that say that you, there are certain docks you can do with spacing, allow more sunlight down there. We do not have those kind of regulations. I mean, it could be built into the regulations, but I'm not so certain in all areas you're gonna have any, you know, seagrass growth, particularly on something that's been around for as long as Riverside Cafe in one form or another over there. So, I mean, we could take a little look at that, I don't mean a little look, but I could take a look at some of that when we, we put the, any regulations on this.
I just didn't know if such systems existed that.
I hadn't heard any of that.
Contain, you know.
You know, what I think we're talking about here, the minute amount of damage that would do is so minute.
Yeah.
You can throw a bucket of fresh water in there and it would offset it. My point, I think the point is, what do we do in our economic activity, and what is the people's lifestyles here? A lot of people enjoy dining on the water or near the water, over the water, and et cetera. Now, that encourages economic development and prosperity. I don't want to see us creating an ordinance, and I don't know whether I'm in favor of it or not, but that dampens that or puts a hindrance on that, so we can't progress as a community. so we can't progress as a community. Because one of the biggest complaints I hear about our community is that it's dying and we're helping it die. And I think we need some prosperity and that's, that is growth, but it's the kind of growth we want. It has to be specific kinds of growth. And I don't know how far I wanna go in this area with the specific growth we're talking about or allowing more. Is it good for the community if we allow more? Maybe it's not. And that's where, I don't know. There's a balance there someplace, and I don't know exactly where we're gonna end up with this.
Well, maybe to help you a little, that if, if we narrowly define this to existing uses at the time of the ordinance and all that with those kinda, you're not really opening a Pandora's Box, and that's something that we could look at. I mean, you're not, there are not gonna be a lot of uses here. They're gonna qualify to even do this. So it's.
And I was, I'm thinking like, where is this available land that, that we could do this? And that's so very, very limited.
Yeah, it's pretty limited.
Restaurants on the water?
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Or commercial space on the water. Could, could do this though in the future?
There is a component.
Oh, yeah, but you know, they're gonna be arguing with the FDEP.
Well, that's true. You'll have to get past the environmental. So that's a big step after FDEP, get our blessing on it.
Okay, so, I mean, I think we could limit it that way.
Hindrance.
There is a, there is a component of our wonderful vision plan that encourages outside dining. And, and people were, I think at the time, thinking more about in front of a restaurant than behind.
Or over the water.
Over the water.
Yeah, yeah.
But there is that aspect to it. There is the lifestyle and economic development aspect. So I'd agree with the chairman on, on that point and also on probably the minimal damage to the environment of, you know, the fish bone or chicken bone that might fall through.
Well, you know, at this point in time, definitely, my feeling is to go ahead with what the, the two that we have existing. One, we can work with ourselves because it's city water. The other obviously has to go through the FDEP. But I don't, I, I think the environmental problems that we've got with the lagoon overshadow everything right now. And I just, I think we can revisit this in the future. I really do.
Tim, I would like to add to that a little bit. I think my opinion on the commercial, not the residential, you know, maybe some, but I think we should have some more input from people from both commercial places and the residents here. And if, if we're gonna discuss it, it's gonna have to have some public input later on anyhow, correct?
Well, that's right. I mean, as I said, all you're looking at are concepts here.
Yeah, I haven't, I don't have any, I'm not strong either way on the commercial. I think I could be swayed by facts and figures and information and, and community sentiment. And did that affect?
Okay.
So if, that's where I'm at. But on the residential, I feel personally strong that we shouldn't allow.
Okay, well, that's, that's very easy to do because the ordinance right now pretty well excludes that. So that gives me my marching orders on that. I will tinker around with this other thing.
That doesn't mean it won't change, Tim. There's nothing, once we set it in stone here, it's always in stone, right?
If you notice, as I.
Marble or granite?
This, this isn't like the Ten Commandments. This, this is.
It's like the lagoon again. It moves slowly, but it's all messed up.
Do you have enough, Tim?
I have enough. Thank you very much. I think that's, and our gentleman did not show up. It's too bad.
I'll just, if you don't mind. Are we finished on that, Tim? Then you can say that? Anybody else have any other comments to make? Okay, the next matter then is that Planning Department matters. I think that's you, Mr. McGary.
I don't have anything to add unless you have some questions of me.
I thought we were going to the, okay.
Yeah, we're moving down. Oh, wait a minute. Okay.
Are you out of order, sir? Are you out of order?
And I missed the public comment, so I apologize.
Sorry, we closed that.
No, no, in the interest of public.
A second ago was very important and dear to my heart.
I'm moved with letting him speak.
From the Chamber Industry Appreciation Awards, 90% of those awards were given. And this goes from architectural redesign of buildings downtown and in the general downtown area. It's the creation of jobs, which Piper is that. If you looked at how many of them are located within the city of Vero Beach, we were 90% of those awards given today, which really should make us feel very proud. And it also is reflective of how important the city of Vero Beach is to Indian River County. But I, I don't, I think that's a misconception that you or the city council or anyone else is really depressing industry and business because I think we can show where we're growing, and there's a lot more of Indian River County than Vero Beach, but I think we are the economic hub of that. And I think it's just important to make that note. Just in case somebody reviews this P and Z meeting on the, I just wanted to have the counterbalance to that.
Wonderful.
I will give you a tour of certain parts of the city you may have never been to. And I own a few properties in those parts. And let me tell you, if a strong wind comes, we won't have to worry about pushing down those homes. They will just fall over.
And Mr. Chairman, I.
And that is a larger section of this city than I would like to appreciate in my life.
And, and I, and I do appreciate that. And believe me, at one time or another, I've probably been there for a utility customer concern or complaint or issues in which Tim gets us in over our head because he cited people and the whole world's coming to an end over that citation. So in many of those locations, I've also been to those remote little pocket parks that we have in the various neighborhoods where the grass gets a little high at times.
Knee highs, nothing.
And so I've been to, but I, I think the important note here is, is when you look at us countywide, the whole county has those type of issues. And it would be great if we were, you know, very affluent throughout the entire boundaries of Indian River County. Obviously, that's not gonna work. But a lot of times, you know, since I've been here, that zero in Vero thing, you know, the only thing it takes, one of the winters today, the Blue Star Wine Bar. If you go down there one evening and you see the activity, it's not reflective of what people say in Vero that we're all not 85 years old. There are people actually, you know, still enjoying life and probably have another 40 or 50 years ahead of them. Not us, but I mean, somebody. But what I'm saying is that. But, but the key is, is that we have that vitality, I think, and it is starting to come back. We've gone through some lulls. But I, I just had to make a comment because when you go to a chamber function like that and you just see how much vitality is taking place in the community. And, and we do have, there's a long way to go. There's no question. Our neighborhoods, and we've got to have regulations. It's like you all debating the discussion on, on having on the docks, you know. We don't want anything that's ugly, even though that it creates two jobs to build a tiki hut or something, you know. It's still, and so we gotta take that into consideration. But at the same time, we do have people that are economic engines. We have people reinvesting in their property, which in the economic classes that I took, when you have people reinvesting in their property means that the property value is greater value than that of the building itself. And so I think that is reflective on Vero, the city of Vero Beach as much as anyplace else. And by the way, I do like squid lips, so.
I like squid lips, but I wouldn't want one in Vero.
My, my only concern is that we don't create regulations that have impact negatively on progress in the community. And yet we have to have regulations to protect us in the community. And it's a hard balance. And it's the unintended consequence. We hear that a lot of times about that. And that's what I worry about sometimes, the unintended consequences of what we're doing here. And sometimes we create a regulation and we, it's easy to create it. It's hard to get it uncreated, okay? Take it back then. So I don't like to see too much regulation, yet I, sitting up here, I voted for more regulation than I don't, I don't regulation. So, but I, it's, it's, you know, it's.
And you're, you're right. And the unfortunate part about regulations, it's always changing because those type of issues are thrown at us. I mean, who would have ever thought of the type of industries that are coming into our community, you know, 25 years ago? Or someone that would build a tiki hut on a dock. You just didn't have that 25 years ago. So we've, we've gotta keep our regulations current with what the changing culture and, and the environment really is. And I'm like you, I mean, when you look at our code book, it's about that thick. I mean, you go back, it's too bad that when we pass a, a regulation, we can't extract two. But what we would find ourselves doing is just modifying and then somebody would interpret that's not enacting new regulations. That's just reinterpreting and we'd never get anywhere. But I, I agree with you. We're always, and, and the unfortunate part is, in many cases, our regulations are created because of a perceived crisis. And it could be one tiki hut with 3,500 docks in the city. And unfortunately, Tim found it.
Well, I think there's some more out there. I've heard good stories.
If you don't have a regulation, then you basically have the Wild West out there. So people can do whatever they want.
And I don't.
And that's the problem.
And I don't want that in my neighborhood. You know, I'm sort of like Mark. I don't live on the water either nor do I desire to have even a swimming pool to have to maintain. But at the same time, I enjoy going to the beach like everyone else. And I would prefer to have the beach where people are not constructing tiki huts all over the, the sand or whatever. But again, mine was just informational purposes. And after coming from that, I mean, the city of Vero Beach, in my opinion, is still very vibrant. And we're seeing reinvestment, which is very critical. And hopefully, we will get to your neighborhoods, Mr. Chairman, before the storm does.
All right.
Thank you.
Do you have all you need on that?
About that, yes.
More than you wanted? Is there any board matters then?
I have a memo here from Mr. Moot.
Yes, I, I did send an email and I thought it would be distributed in advance of the meeting. And I could ask our council member or our city manager or our planning director if it is now moot. Because, you know, I, I thought it'd be appropriate for this board to talk about advertising on city property, whether it be the lifeguard stands or the boardwalks or, you know, park benches or, or what it is. But I saw that last, or Tuesday night, it was the, the ordinance to allow advertising of that sort was voted down three to two. Not to say that it can't come back.
That is correct. It could possibly come back. I intend to bring it back once I get the majority of council, unless there's a council person.
Especially when it's a mixed majority.
What?
A mixed majority.
Well, most of our votes are mixed majorities. But you can't talk about, I mean, you can take it up. Council's made a policy decision for the entire city.
Okay. Well, it would have been nice if it would have come to us before. I guess this was my, part of my point.
But we will keep that into consideration. I've got several committees, and then I've got Recreation Commission where it went to a committee, then went to a Recreation Commission. And, and I don't mind trying to figure out, and Tim, if you notice anything that you feel like that has a planning aspect to it, we can bring it to the.
Right, that was moving fairly quickly through the process. And normally, you would see anything that, that affects the land development regulations. This is not a land development regulation, but I can understand, you know.
The policy concept, I guess, is what you're talking about.
Would it fall under the ordinance?
Well, the sign ordinance is, no, the sign ordinance is identified in there, exempting it from the sign ordinance.
Exempting, oh, is this exempting it from?
Yes, it would have to.
It would have to.
It would have to. That's what I'm saying. Why wouldn't the sign ordinance just apply?
But that wouldn't be, we weren't amending the land development regulations. It's up at the, I.
But anytime you see one of those items, feel free to give me a call. We'll place it on an agenda and just get the, get the thing discussed. And that's what I've told the Recreation Commission, because we've, we've had some conflicts between the Recreation Commission and some of their subcommittees. And one says yes, one says no, and then we still proceed, so.
Tim, there was something, speaking of the Tuesday meeting then, they talked about a member from P and Z board being a part of the Railroad Watch Group. Was that anything we should be dealing with?
All aboard Florida.
Yeah.
I just drafted that resolution for review today. So I did put that language in there that one of the members of this board would be on that commission, so.
We're talking about the Choo Choo Board, right?
Yeah, Choo Choo Board.
High speed rail?
All aboard. I think we developed a new name for that, didn't we, Peggy? For the committee?
It was long, but it was good.
Yeah, so we. We're in the process of the resolution.
Rail?
But a member of the P and Z, what we were trying to do is get stakeholders, P and Z, the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, and those type of folks. But we didn't wanna make a 35-member committee.
Okay. I just thought if we, if it's, now is the time, okay.
Right, it was gonna be five members with two alternates, I think.
All right. I think if there's nothing else, then we're ready to have adjournment. Is that right? No additional members matters?
Nope.
I'll move to adjourn.
Have a motion?
Second.
So moved.
Okay.
Now we can go into a workshop that somebody's here for, I think. And we would now like to have a, a, we're talking about a workshop discussion amending the land development regulations to allow community gardens as a principal use in residential zoning districts. And so first I'd like to do is open it up to the public. Or, Tim, do you wanna have to say so before we do that?
Well, why don't we, it's not a problem. We'll have Will Tremmel could give you a few words. Will's.
He's the cause of this problem.
He was the cause of this problem.
It's not a problem.
Why don't you come up to the podium so we can whip on you for a while?
Let's not refer to it as a problem. Let's look, let's look at it as an opportunity.
It's an opportunity. We just wanna give Will a hard time.
By the way, Will, I drove by your garden and I was impressed. I'm an old gardener and I, I was impressed with what you did there. So I'll give you credit for that.
Yeah, very nice.
Well, as you know, I spoke in front of the city council last time about my garden. And Mr. McGary did send me a copy of the resolution drafted. And it addresses all of my concerns and all of what I feel like the city would be concerned with. So I mean, I'm fully in support of allowing community gardens. And that's all I have to say for now.
Were there any restrictions or other terms in the, in the proposed ordinance that you had a problem with or that?
No, no, no. I, I'd given this, some, some things that I thought should be addressed and they all seemed to be incorporated. It's restricting, but not too confining.
Yeah, I think Will, Will gave me, he did a lot of work and he did a nice little ordinance they gave us. And I took a lot of those elements out of there. And then I, obviously, I took things from other communities. And I don't know, Will, I didn't ask you, but I assume, was that from Cornell from Ithaca? Did you got that?
But some of it.
Summer was from it, so. So some of the things like composting, I have it enclosed in containers and everything. Being in Florida, you know, we can't just leave it out kinda thing. So there were some differences from his ordinance just because of the difference in climate. And I figured that's.
Composting is permitted, just not on a vacant lot. Is that correct?
Well, it's gotta be, it's gotta be enclosed.
In the backyard? Doesn't it be enclosed, does it?
No, no, we've got it enclosed in this. So it is more strict than what Will had in his.
That raises one of the concerns I have. And, and it, you know, you're enclosing the compost area. So there's a shed and here's a shed and there's.
Well, we call them containers.
Well, okay. But there's a shed for pesticides that has to be locked. And there's all this motorized machinery that may wanna be in a shed for, you know, security purposes. So I guess what I'm saying is it gets down to how many structures are you gonna allow?
We have one, we're only allowing one storage.
Ten by ten.
Ten by ten by ten.
Hundred square feet.
Only one per, yes. See, he can handle my job, I'm telling you. In fact.
And, and is that?
You're going to tell there's somebody beside you.
That, that structure, is that a like 150 mile an hour structure? Or is it a shed that you pick up at big lots or?
These are normally gonna be a shed that you would pick up. These aren't ones you construct normally.
And I would say it's the same as the other 5,000 sheds we have in the city right now that are all gonna blow over when a storm comes. They're all just sitting there like this one.
Not mine.
Maybe not, but almost all the other sheds.
Well, normally, you're gonna have to get them anchored. You do only.
Yeah, well, you should anchor them, but.
Yes.
And is that in here or does that tie into some other?
We have provisions up there that where you need a billing permit, because there may be certain things that need a billing permit. You would get that permit for that special use, for whatever you were doing.
Well, I guess since I have the floor, I mentioned last time about the permission of the owner.
Well, any type of development requires the permission of the owner. If you don't own the property, you'd have a owner's signature or authorization. You can't get development approval without that.
Okay, so that would include a garden with no, with no structures?
Correct.
Correct.
It's just a use. Now, what's the difference between a principal use and a permitted use and?
Well, a principal use is the, is one of the listed uses in a district, which allows you to have. A permitted means it, it's, it's actually the same thing. It's, it's those allowable type uses in that. And of course, any principal use or permitted use has accessory uses that go with it. Therefore, you can have a swimming pool with your house or those kinda things, okay? And in this case, we specifically state that any of your gardens with your house is not considered a community garden. It's just an accessory to your house where you already have a use in the property.
Okay, so this is, again, I'm still confused about principal versus permitted, but it's a permitted use on a vacant lot with one structure and no swimming pool.
It is considered, when we say permitted, which you're talking about, the principal use in that property. You know, it's a, it's a permitted use, which is the principal use in that property. So for instance, you could have a parking lot. You can't just put parking lots sometimes in districts that don't have a principal use. But in some districts, a parking lot can be a principal use. So in this case, a community garden, there is no, if you have nothing on that property, there's no explicit use on that in that zoning. So you, we're making this an explicit use and therefore it'd be permitted.
Therefore, it's under these rules and regulations.
That's exactly right.
Would any accessory use is being allowed?
Well, accessory to the community garden, yes. Whatever, you know, generally, they're, they're gonna be pretty limited, but.
I think the thing that helped me get through this, I think, Mark, was a little bit, was once I figured out we're talking about a vacant lot. And if you apply it just to that, when you, when you think about somebody's home and if you start intermixing the two, they could, because their principal use is single family dwelling or whatever it might be. So all these things are ancillary to that. We only go to this lot. Now, Mr. Jones owns two lots side by side. He probably doesn't, this doesn't apply to him, I don't think, 'cause it's the same owner.
It's just under an acre.
If it's under an acre, he doesn't apply to him. Is that correct? He can garden there if he wanted to on the whole lot.
Well, normally, yeah, that would, if it's adjacent, that would normally, we consider that all as.
So this is only some absentee owner is allowing a person to do something on this property. These things apply.
Or it could be the owner. It could be the owner has the property.
Or the, or the, okay, or the owner, okay.
Right.
That's why, I don't think it's overly onerous, and I think it's reasonable.
I have one question, one comment that we all made the last time we knew that this was coming. Somebody mentioned, I think it was you, Mark, said, oh, I really like it. I like the buffer. And I don't see anything about a buffer.
Well, we're not, well, one of the things in here, we're requiring all the setbacks to be met.
Right.
But to have a buffer, and therefore that's why, I mean, these are not going to be necessarily permitted use in the property. You got a special event, you know, special use permit that's going to be applied here, and they're really supposed, a transitory use of that land until it becomes a residential use. Not that it couldn't go on for many years, but the whole idea was not to make so many regulations on here that would make it difficult to do a community garden. I think that's the other concern people have, that these are really intended either to, for the, for the residents of the neighborhood or the community, or as, as Will's been doing, is something that they can donate food to a not-for-profit or some other organization. So, I mean, you don't want to make it too onerous, and in a temporary use, if they have to do a lot of that kind of thing. I just don't know if that's necessary here.
What's the history of that buffer?
What's the question?
Was it, the history of that buffer, was it already there?
Is there a berm?
It's unusual.
Is there a berm in front of it?
It's more of a hedge.
What is there? I can't remember.
On my particular lot, we put up, you know, nice plants out in front to make it look nice.
Yeah, that's, that's the only thing I'm thinking of.
Oh, I see.
You know, even a hedge line or something, I just, I mean, you're doing a fantastic job, but not everybody is as clean a gardener as you are. That's all, I'm just thinking.
How long would it take to grow a hedge, though? If you wanted to plant a garden for a season, but to grow the hedge, you're.
As far as my understanding goes, there, there are other ordinances and laws concerning cleanliness of an empty lot. And of course, those still all apply.
They all still apply.
And these are more very community garden specific things that haven't come up before in the law.
Okay.
Well, a lot of times we look at worst-case scenarios, and I don't know whether this is a worst-case scenario, but the worst I could think of would be a cornfield. You know, is there, would there be any requirement to have varied crops, or are there setbacks of the cornfield, and?
We can write a book.
That's the highest and best use of a lot's garden.
Well, I might eat a lot of corn.
Well, if you take, if you take the, the setback you have to have on both side yards, and it's a typical subdivision lot, you've got a certain size amount that you can plant.
Yeah.
Beyond that, you could find a violation if you wanted to.
And, and you have to also apply with a garden plan, which could be rejected by the.
Right. I mean, we do have that. I mean, again, this is not going to be a permanent structure or something on the property, and how, you know, and a garden's a garden. It's going to be different. It's going to be its own little.
Would you prefer a boat or a garden?
Well, I, I just, some people take this to a personal level, and I have a vacant lot right across the street from me, and it's been there since I've lived here seven years. And it looks pretty ratty most of the time, and I've noticed, I've found that there's not an ordinance for mowing it, keeping it mowed.
Do you live across from the post?
So, I mean, I think about, I do, I think about this community garden. If that went in, I'm thinking my vision of a community garden is your vision, is what you've done. But then I think everybody else's vision isn't mine.
That's true.
So I don't know if I'd want a community garden over there unless there was a little bit more buffer. And, and on a 80, 80-foot lot, typical 80-foot lot.
Well, when you say buffer, you mean on the front, well.
On the front, I mean, maybe 50, whoops, sorry, 50 feet of a three-foot hedge or something, you know, put in coconut.
Well, how about the people that have property right beside it? Are you going to want to have also a buffer?
I know.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going.
How long's it take, how long's it take, what would it cost to put that buffer in? If you, if you want to plant this year, and you have to have a buffer that's four feet tall, what would it cost?
No, not four feet tall, I'd say just three feet.
But if you put three, you know that business.
If you put three-gallon shrubs, three feet on center for 50 feet, just say 50 feet. So what do you get? Less than 20 at $10 apiece.
You know, this brings up my own concern here in terms of.
Do you guarantee that, Robin?
No, I'm not, I'm just having a discussion.
She's offering that service.
As a service?
No, I will do that.
Well, I mean, if, if you feel that we need to put something in there, I could, yeah, we can do that. I just was trying to make this to fit in there with all these requirements outgoing, overboard on these kinds of things.
Tim, let me, because this kind of fits into that also. On the parking, this proposed ordinance here references one parking on-site, but then it talks about making provision for off-street parking space. And are we talking about parking in the easements?
Well, this would be, no, it would be where you have, you would be able to do that if they even had a curb cut in there. Some of these properties may not have a curb cut. We're not going to have cars driving over curbs and that, so it's really up to discretion, planning director, in terms of where to put that, you know, where they, that'd be part of the site plan. I didn't want to get in a lot of specifics in that. You can usually have a driveway that's two feet from your property, side property line.
But, Tim, one thing the ordinance seems to be silent on, I have friends that have community gardens, I'm familiar with them quite well. Many community gardens have vertical structures that go along with, with the plants. So you have some plants that, that have to be supported, and they can go pretty high, especially down here. And there's nothing in here silent on temporary plant-supporting structures.
Yeah, I kind of left that out of there, I mean.
Bean poles.
Oh, it could be more than bean poles.
Maybe trellises.
Yeah, trellises. I'm more thinking about the flower, you know, and the trellises and things like that.
Should we mention those in there, or do you want?
No, I was just questioning, why, why you were silent on it, that's all.
Well, I was looking at that as an accessory to the thing, that you could do that. The question is, are we going to have a problem where we have some structures that, that really were, are beyond, you know, what we were looking at? A big trellis, that would be, I mean, maybe we should put a height limit on any other structures, supporting structures for plant. I could do that.
I think that might be a way of protecting.
Let me take a look at that.
Maybe 10 feet or something like that as a, as a structure. That makes sense to you, Will?
I can support that, though.
Do we need a minimum, maximum acreage?
I can't support the hedge.
That's specified in here, isn't it?
Yeah, you can only have one, one acre or the size of the lot, I think, whatever is the max, smaller than the lot of record, or should be no greater than one acre in size. And I got that, I think from Benita Springs had something, and I think that was a reasonable limitation on it.
Are there provisions for the decommissioning of this garden?
Yes.
I think it's 30 days before the, the permit is revoked. It has to be returned to pre-community garden condition.
And if you, if it's inactive for 120 days, that if, if there's any violation of the conditions, I think we have a procedure.
15 days to correct it or.
That's your relief clause.
I like it.
I tell you, he's got the ordinance down. You don't need me. Now we know who.
Do you want to take a main microphone up front here? Go ahead.
Tim, what you're referencing on page nine, the revocation of permit in case something goes wrong, we talked about a contact person, a permit holder, you've also got the owner of the land, you referenced governance early. I'm worried that if this thing falls apart and so-and-so didn't weed yesterday and he was supposed to, and I'm mad at him, you know, that kind of stuff, where the community garden kind of fails for lack of governance if that could be used. On, on the work that you were looking up, did it cover that more specifically?
Well, we're going to go after the property owner, so we've got a ultimate. So the property owner definitely is going to be involved in this, but I, but on the day-to-day operations of that, you'll probably have somebody like Will, but I think you, your family owns the property, okay? But if it were different, you would have this contact that we could get, you wouldn't be calling the property owner. If that all fell through, we'd still go after the property owner in the long run. So it's, I don't think there's an issue.
I was just worried about, you've got, like, so many people mentioned in here, and that's on page 5G, and I was just curious, you're zeroing in on the one person who would be responsible here.
Well, it's the contact person, because they're normally, be like, your rental manager, you know, they may be managing your property for a tenant who's doing all sorts, and we'd contact them, but ultimately, if nothing's done, we'll, we'll get the property owner. And that's the person who's going to be responsible.
I think, I think the real safeguard is if we have a mess from somebody doing this, our recourse is to revoke the permit, and they can't take the land and leave town. So with the land still there, and there's still an owner, and he'll have to be the responsible party. So he has to make a good decision about who he puts in the land, knowing what his possible consequences are. If he does, if he puts somebody other than a will on that property, and he don't do the right thing, he knows he's responsible then for the outcome of what's occurred, and we can take, take action against that gentleman, or that woman, until, until the property becomes ours, and then we'll clean it up.
And I think most reasonable people don't just, you know, let people use their land bully-nilly. It's one of those things where, yes, you, the property owner ultimately is liable for what happens on the property. And at least in my case, in the majority of community gardens cases, the owner is also the operator because they have such a vested interest in it. But yes, if it were go to another property, I'm sure the operator of the community garden would have to prove extensively how, how well they're going to take care of it. I'm, I'm sure if I owned a property, I wouldn't just, you know, say, okay, go ahead and use it.
Are we going to have lease requirements, or what about insurance?
Now, I, that, that's all up to the property owner. That's beyond what we have to get into.
When they do the permit, do they submit a photograph of how the property looks at that point?
Not as currently written, but they are required to submit a plan of what it will look like.
I was just saying, because we've got here that the site, on the expiration of the permit, or whatever, that the site is returned to pre-community garden condition, and how do we know what that is?
We could add that as a photograph of the site. I don't see that as a problem. I'll, I'll put a note to that. That's not an issue.
Okay.
I gather we wouldn't be putting community.
This is exciting. It really is.
We would not be putting community gardens on heavily treed lots, I presume.
That's correct.
Yeah, I don't.
Not if you want to have any.
I don't want to get any, any requests in here to cut down some trees because we want to put in a community garden.
No, that's not going to be.
We would reject those.
Well, do we have something defined as acceptable vacant lot conditions?
That's covered in other city ordinances as far as the.
We have, yes, we have maintenance. It's in chapter, well, 38, I think, our, that we have the environmental that has property, it's, it's our property maintenance, how requirements. Poorly written property.
Well, what I was saying of is it, it maybe should be restored to, you know, permissible vacant lot conditions as opposed to the way it was before, because the way it was before might not be acceptable or desirable.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, I could look at putting that in there. I don't think that's a major issue. Okay.
Okay, I have another question. On page four, at the top, number two, that this, when it talks about, you know, no plants, no producer plants can be sold, is, is that the paragraph, or whatever you call this, the sentence, that excludes somebody from going in and saying, growing potted plants, like, like container plants, and not selling them, but donating them? They get under the wire somewhere. But that's another thing. I really wouldn't want somebody growing container plants next door to me. I'm just thinking about what might happen on my vacant lot across the street. But I just, you know, if I see somebody, you know, if they're growing a lot of, like, shrub material or something, but they're not, they're not selling it, how, is there a good enough definition here?
They could be giving it to their friend who's selling it.
Yeah, I just want to know that it's a good enough definition.
People always try and avoid the law.
I know, that's what I'm.
Running businesses out of their house, and, you know, things like that are going to happen. But ultimately, the goal of a community garden is not to become a commercial operator.
No, I know that. I just want to make sure it doesn't, that this clar, makes it very clear. I guess looking back at the definition of a community garden will help take care of it then. Harvest food crops, non-food ornamental, that's what got me, was non-ornamental crops.
Robin, why don't you make a bid on that lot next door to you, and save yourself all this anxiety?
I know, I'm so sorry. I'm usually very quiet, but this one, no, and I'm a plant person, so.
That's, that's a, that's a good point. If it happens in your neighborhood, it's different than happens in my neighborhood.
Tim, page 3D4 talks, says any fencing shall comply with the development standards for residential zoning district. Do we allow fences on vacant lots?
Well, this isn't a vacant lot, once you've proved the, yeah.
This is essentially.
Okay, so you can fence this.
You can fence this, yes. There may be some fencing they want to do. Don't have to, but they have that.
Chain link fences.
No, they, they have to meet the requirements, and we don't allow chain link fences.
How about Osceola School?
It's a school board.
We don't control that.
That's a school board.
Put it this way, I have a hard time getting them to close their screen for their dumpsters over there. That, that was a major miracle, just getting that done.
So essentially, before, you could either have a house on a residential lot, or get a conditional land use for like a golf course, a church, or an educational area. So, so a community garden would be held to the same standards as, say, the, the local church, just instead of having a building there, it would be garden beds.
That's right.
And so all of the same standards would still be in place.
On one hand, I don't like the idea of fences in the middle of a residential neighborhood, a vacant lot fenced. It, it takes away, a home takes away the impact, the visual impact of a fence, and you almost expect to see a side and, and rear fence. Why would you have a fence on a garden if it didn't cover the front of the, of the garden?
Well, they may want to have a fence, maybe they're putting some power tools or stuff behind it. I, I don't, remember, this is a, once the garden's over, it's all got to be removed anyway. So I don't see people spend a lot of money putting fences up if you're, you know, for a temporary type use, but.
Could you put a fence on the front of the, of the property at any, at any?
Well, they have to meet our, our requirements in our code, which is there's, you know, you can only be five feet unless you're more than, more than the setback, then you can go to six feet and all that. I don't see this happening on these things, but, I mean, is your concerns the, the type of fences that would go in? I mean, we could add.
Just the existence of a fence, especially along the front, it's not much good if it's, the purpose of the fence would be to, so that I don't walk down there after dark and help myself to the zucchini.
Well, Will, you don't have a fence, right?
I don't have a fence, no.
No. I mean, and we don't have deer and other animals in there munching away at it, do we?
Yeah, that, that was my concern.
I mean, if you're in one of those areas with deer and all that, there, there'll be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What good is a fence if it's not locked, for example?
Well, my question would be, with the wildlife that would be attracted to your garden, what precaution would you take to protect your plants?
I've always heard the saying that if you're not taking, paying taxes, then you're not making any money. And the same thing with the garden. If you're, if you're not, you know, losing some of it to the local wildlife, whether that be through the bunnies or anything, then you don't have any plants. And that's just something you have to deal with. Obviously, a fence would be a good countermeasure, but I don't foresee people, you know, who are planning on turning the property or, or using it for a couple of years, making that huge investment. You know, fencing is extremely expensive to, whether to put in or to buy it. And so unless it's going to be a multi-year, multi-multi-year project, people won't do that. And generally, if they are going to make that investment for a garden, they'll be the type of people who are willing to spend the money.
The permit's $200, so you know that.
What's the purpose of allowing fences, if everybody's saying, well, there probably won't be any?
Well, there may be a case where they need a, so we have that. I don't want to have to be there, oh, I'm sorry, there's nothing allows a fence. I mean, so I made the provisions in here for having a fence.
I've never seen a fence stop a squirrel or rabbit from going in and eating all that food.
Bunnies taste like chicken, by the way.
They're the highest protein meat available.
Is there any additional discussion on this?
Can I ask where you donate the?
Oh, you know.
Am I the only one that has a problem with fences?
I donate to the homeless family shelter. That's, I've always had very good relations with them.
Every time I'm out buying a, something for my plants, there's always farmers there asking for fresh manure. It is a great fertilizer. And of course, we have to be very sensitive that the odors don't go off the property.
This does not allow for a storage of fresh manure.
Yeah.
Even dried, even dried manure.
Even application of manure. Malarganite gets a little fragmented.
That is something that I do think needs to be clarified, the difference between fresh and, and, you know, composted manure. Because even the. and, you know, composted manure, because even the black cow soil is manure, it's just certainly not fresh. So, I'm not sure how we would deal with that, because you obviously don't want, you know, manure laying around on an empty lot. But I think it is extremely important to the growth of the vegetables, to have some type of organic substance that's useful.
Human or otherwise.
It's not, it doesn't...
No, this is not Japan. Many years in Japan, I can tell you.
The bucket went into the hooch.
Am I the only one that has a problem with fences?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with fences.
I don't.
I don't have a problem with a hedge either.
Don't have a problem with it.
No, I don't have a problem with that at all. It's impractical.
Hedges are extremely expensive.
To have a hedge, you don't think, okay.
For a garden in a neighborhood, yeah.
It's like the fence, would you do that, all that work for a garden?
We only have a temporary permit.
Two seasons. The hedge costs, and it'd take you a while to grow it.
And a lot of water.
And a lot of water, and a lot of effort, and I just see it's impractical to making, you know, accomplishing your goal. By the time you go through all that, just don't garden.
And a significant hedge reduces the availability of the garden space to begin with.
I raised a question, though.
And I pictured the garden across from me, and I said to myself, you know, I, you know what, that's not a bad thing, there's a lot worse things I'd rather across me than a garden, no matter, no matter how bad the garden is, it's just something that's, it's natural, it's not bad, it doesn't say anything negative, in my opinion. Now, somebody else may not feel that way, I like manicured better, but the garden's fine, you know, but...
Will, how do you irrigate?
We got an irrigation permit from the city, and we do drip irrigation from a well on site. We went through all the electrical permitting and irrigation permitting.
Okay, so that's...
And that was...
That's also allowed.
Not especially difficult, something that any large community garden would be more than happy to do. Another one at the Gifford Community Center uses rain collection tanks and other implements of irrigation, but for us, the well and electrical permitting seemed more reasonable.
Any additional questions, Will?
No, congratulations.
Tim, what are you, Tim, what are you looking for us as a...
I've gotten three things that you asked us to put into the ordinance, the photograph, the structure height, and, let's see, what was the other one?
The supporting?
Yeah, the supporting one.
Something I said.
The height structure, the photograph, I think that's all.
You want to put, you want, should we, can we get a consensus on each one of those?
That'd be fine.
Okay. And do you want to mention yours and see if you can get a consensus on it, on the hedge?
Not to think I've pretty much gotten a consensus.
Come on, we're not shy.
No, it's okay, I'm, I think you've convinced me enough, I just... Maybe if we had planned... I've been in the South for quite a while, and I've seen gardens that don't look good. And that's my only concern, is they, you know, they just go into disrepair, and then who's to decide what looks good and what doesn't, so...
Robyn, I think then that we go to and we shut the garden down, because we have ways of doing that, and make them commit to compliance, and...
Yeah, anybody goes through this effort, wants to really do it.
Well, I'm a proponent, I think it's a wonderful thing for people to, you know, and walk down the street and share neighbors'...
Well, when you plant your garden and your rows and things like that, you have a way in which it'd be attractive from the street?
Yeah, certainly. I mean, we, on our particular property, yes, we've put up a bunch of plants out front, and, but generally during the growing season, it's very attractive having plants, and the grass is manicured, and, I mean, everything looks...
It's fun planting it, too, yeah.
Yeah, and realistically, if you're working in the garden, you don't want to walk into something that's ugly every day, and it's not that difficult to make vegetables beautiful.
I think you're, I think you're going to find, if your garden, if you were to rate it in a top one to 10 scale, you come in about an eight, nine, or nine, five, most of them are going to come in something less than that with Robyn, which is Robyn's concern.
Well, I could, I could tell you, I believe in what you're doing, I think it's fantastic, and if it brings communities together, not just, just for, you know, donating to a local charity, but I think just bringing the neighborhood together to talk, to maybe contribute some time, I think it's absolutely fabulous, it's a wonderful...
Well, certainly, like you were saying, Mr. Chairman, if they're all like his garden, it'd be great, but we don't know that.
They may not be. And a couple of things I can mention to our board here, is that, number one, the owner, he has the responsibility there, and if his neighbors are going to come after him because they have an ugly garden, he's, you know, before I'd let somebody do something like this on a vacant lot, I'd make sure I had some assurances placed, and as soon as that person doesn't comply with that, I'd make them get rid of the garden. So, I mean, because there's pressure from the neighborhood, and that's what happens in your neighborhood, it's the good neighbor policy. So, if we're going to get a community garden, the good neighbor policy works a lot better than our rules and regulations, I can tell you that. Because if your neighbor stops speaking to you and starts being difficult, you'll make changes or else you move out.
You're right.
So, and that's why all the rules in the world don't stop bad guys from doing bad things.
At least you have the option of giving them free food, which, you know...
Yeah, that's another thing, zucchini now into the front door makes it look a lot better to me.
That's right. Throw up a basket of food.
That's something I did mention before, would the operator, let's say it's not an owner-operator, would the operator of the community garden be permitted to pay for or rent this, this land?
I don't think we're going to get involved in that.
I don't see why not, he can do whatever he wants.
It's not our problem.
He can make money on it.
He can do what he wants with this land.
Are we ready to call a question on this, just to give Tim some direction? I think that's all we're asking for today, Tim, right, direction?
Right, I was going to schedule this for public hearing at your next meeting, because we're already running it, so I'm going to make these changes, I mean, that we don't talk...
That's good.
Do you think you have consensus on all the changes?
Yeah, as I said, I was going to go over them, we talked about the, add the photograph, which is not a big deal, and the height on the accessories, structures...
I think you have consensus on that, Tim.
And that's all, did I miss something? I think that's all we...
There was something I said, and I can't remember what it was, that you said you were going to add.
I had one question, I was, the question on the definition, if we're talking about a community garden, and yet we allow it to be operated by an individual, I mean, shouldn't, if it's a community garden, how do we get beyond a single person having a garden for themselves to a community?
Well, I mean, Will, were you a single individual on that property, or did you, was that...
I've certainly had a lot of help along the way. From what I've found, it's very difficult to maintain a garden by yourself.
Yeah.
But, I mean, people may try and do that, and, you know, ultimately, what I say that is, it's private property and it's going to be a garden, and they're held responsible by both the city and their neighbors for what they're doing.
But, okay.
So, any property.